All right, I call the meeting to order of the Dunsmere City Council on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Big Dave, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
United States of America.
America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to create your roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilwoman Luke Casey.
Here.
And Mayor Brian.
Present. We have no special presentation this evening. So we'll move forward into public comment for the evening. This is our general public comment time period. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, so anything that's of interest that's not on the agenda or something that is on the consent agenda, which would just be the check registry for the last two weeks. You can do so now. Please give your name, address of the public record, and you'll be allotted three minutes each. Thank you. To go about public comment, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button or hit star nine if you're calling in.
I don't see any hands.
Yeah, okay. Seen none, then I will close the general public comment for this evening. We will have public comment regarding each action item further on down the agenda. So let's move forward to comments. City manager, would you like to begin?
One sec to find him. There he is.
Okay, so in the process of putting together mailers to the identified vacant and distressed building owners, going down kind of a recap of the ordinance and what can be expected and basically how things work once you you receive the notice that we're kicking off that you need to register with the city and then you'll be visited by code enforcement and building inspector. So that's in the process. Got off a call with an interesting organization called Retail Strategies that is inquiring at how we plan to use some of our stimulus money and other money that's come available, C D B G, coronavirus. And what they do is depending on what we need and how much we want their services to work on a plan for pulling new businesses into your town, and they have a lot of connections in the retail world and know how to do the networking to get, you know, some some folks to consider what your city has to offer. So I'm waiting for a proposal from them to see if it's A, it's affordable and B, it's what we need. You know, there are a lot of firms that do this, but it was it was a good conversation. Yeah, I mean, there's there's so much going on right now. Mossbrough Trails moving forward, trying to figure out a way that we, the city can recoup the the fees that we put out for abatement and for citations, not only for those people that own property in town, but what can we do about citations given for those that don't own property? And doesn't seem like there's much we can do, but there's a lot going on. It's almost, you know, more better to kind of pepper me with questions because I've, you know, you got a question on it, I'm working on it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a question, Councilman Art?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and we had no public comment, but I have had two or three citizens of Dunsmere approach me since our last meeting. Friction with our code enforcement effort for non-commercial buildings. And I guess my question to Todd is having fought hard for the code enforcement officer and the need for us to start enforcing our laws. For the time that we've had our code enforcement officer in place, what is the technique for residents that feel like they're not being heard, being harassed, whatever, by the city? Are you the next line of appeal? If you're a citizen that doesn't want to participate in our meetings but feels like they're being, what can I say? Treated harshly by the city in enforcing its code? What is the dispute resolution process so I could tell people, thank you for sharing, but what you need to do is this?
Great question. So you may recall about, gosh, it was probably eight months ago, you know, when we updated some of the the fees paid for certain, you know, citations to match California code, we also put an administrative procedure in place where those that are cited for something can call Wendy Perkins and set up a time, you know, I believe it's two Thursdays a month, where they're able to meet with the code enforcement officer and someone from the Sheriff's Department to kind of go over what their issues are and what their defense is and, you know, and, you know, and if it's a valid argument, tickets are often thrown out. And if it's just a complaint about treatment, you know, we have, you know, it's it's hard to kind of parse between, you know, what is real and just people not liking to adhere to what's on the books. Most of the time, it's just not wanting to adhere to the books, but if you feel like you've been treated poorly, then you can always contact me through the through the email, you know, comment section. There's a complaint card that they can submit to City Hall, and I respond to those.
All right, thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Are there further questions, the city manager, at this time? All right, thank you so much, Todd. Let's move on to Finance Director.
He is very under the weather with his after a second COVID shot.
Ooh, okay. We'll excuse him this evening then. Hope he's feeling better soon. I don't see, let me look through.
We do have Sergeant Kubowitz.
Okay. Oh, there he is. Yes, Sergeant Kubowitz. How are you guys?
I'm doing well, thank you. Hello? You guys there?
Yeah.
You guys.
Of course, this this week.
Some quick. Hello? I'm bringing up. How about now? It's better. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just doing my math. And it looks like we're actually at our contracted hours because I got some late hours in from some deputies and looks like we're have reached our contract hours already for the for this month, for the our total contract. So I think we're over a hundred percent now. So I think that shows how much we've been trolling in the city of Dunsmere.
Okay, there. Yeah, you still seem to be breaking in and out, maybe just talk slowly and clearly and we'll we'll let you know if it breaks up again.
So for the stats for April of two thousand twenty-one, the Sheriff's Office did five hundred and sixty-one hours of patrol time. We had two hundred and six calls for service. Out of those calls, we took twenty cases, sixteen traffic stops were made, ten citations were issued. We did arrest eight people. Two people arrested for felonies and they're booked, and five of those eight arrests were We did have a pretty good motorcycle pursuit at the south end through the north end of Dunsmere, all the way to the south end of Dunsmere and around. We ended up catching that suspect, a lot of, and a DUI arrest. I was actually pretty shocked, but a lot of our calls for service have gone down as far as like burglaries. There was only two for the month of April. I mean, we had zero thefts, zero auto thefts, only two assault batteries, no domestic disturbances, one vandalism. We did twenty-two school checks and nine disturbing the peace calls. So I think April was a pretty good month for us.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Thank you so much.
And I know it, and Mike come up, I know me and Todd have been texting each other. Yes, the City Hall was spray painted with some graffiti about the C S O. I personally did the investigation for that.
Sam, you're breaking up again. Could you back up?
Hard work store matched all that.
Sergeant Kubowitz, you're breaking up again. Maybe you could back up a sentence.
Where'd I lose you guys at?
You personally did the investigation on the graffiti.
I was just wondering. Yeah, so I did check with Nate, with Ron McLeod, and I didn't talk to him personally, but his Unfortunately, that color of paint is not sold at the hardware store, so I don't have any good leads for the spray paint, and there is no that could capture the suspect or suspect.
All right, I'm a little shocked that we don't have in some form a camera at that location. Maybe we should consider looking into that. I know we discussed it with your predecessor, and he said he, if we ever did go that route to advise him of it and on it, and he could help us find the right equipment that would actually be useful.
Yeah, and I I talked to City Hall, and I I totally forgot to call Todd because I knew Todd wasn't going to be in, but I know that there had been, I know the county for the stage bus had got. And I don't know if that's a avenue that you guys would want to take. So it was just like a, and I'm sure there's probably public safety funding that'll allow it, but I'm not sure where to find it. And I know the county did get some grant funding from Homeland Security for security cameras. Okay. Hey, guys, run mute and me. I've got Blake on ordering some, you know, there's a pack of five Ring cameras that would do the trick, some going on to, you know, well, let's just say they'd go at various locations so we can see what's going on, you know, on government buildings, but we're also trying to expand that along the street on Dunsmere Avenue. So it's it's in the works.
Thank you so much, Todd.
That's great.
And then I, and I know the city of Weed, and I don't know if you guys have any friends at the Weed City Council, but I know they actually have cameras on some of their light poles at certain intersections in the city that is monitored at the Weed Police Department. Good info. I'll I'll check up with. Because it it was actually useful in a in the spring of last year when we had a shooting right behind that Asian barbecue area, where we're actually able to use that that camera system to see suspect, suspect vehicle, and ultimately be able to capture them.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions with Sergeant Kubowitz?
No, but you need to get a better phone.
The county's internet, sorry.
All right, have a great evening, Sergeant Kubowitz. We look forward to speaking with you in the near future.
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, and then I I do see that we have our code enforcement officer on. Does he have a report to give?
I was, I think.
Maybe not, maybe he's just.
Yeah, I think he's just available.
Okay, all right. Well, Councilman Art, would you like to begin, Council comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, members of the public. Really only two items, and the minutes from the last meeting carry the notice that the Community Resource Center is going to have an event on June the ninth at ten in the morning. It's going to be the annual blessing of the community garden, and it's also going to be the dedication of the Ross Taylor Falls. There's going to be three ministers present, and for the community garden, it's our strongest start ever. Y'all saw the newspaper, the notice that we're going to have the Dunsmere Farmers Market again, and we're working closely to support the Dunsmere Farmers Market. So obviously, all of you are welcome and encouraged to attend. The other is, maybe Todd could speak more in detail than I can, but I have been receiving the emails from Linda Shabin and our D P A C committee and all of the hard work that has gone into a grant proposal to give the city of Dunsmere the resources to greatly improve their fire safety. And as a small city with a small staff and unpaid council members, this is an extraordinary response, and I am so grateful to everybody. And I know there's a fair number of cooks in the kitchen that got us to the point of this multimillion dollar grant to make us fire safe. So thank you to everybody.
So what I add to that is Linda Shabin has done the heavy lifting on this, and it's exactly what Peter said. It's it is a multimillion dollar grant that we're seeking, and it's really well written. We've got a lot of people that have weighed in on it. It's a, it's the best grant of this kind that I've seen written, and it, what it does is allows us to move as, remove as much fuel as we can get our hands on that is along every single road in Dunsmere and anything, you know, basically anything that we can get our hands on, anybody that allows us on private property will will move it along if we win. Linda really deserves huge kudos. I mean, she does so much for the community, period, but the, just the the lift on this one, you know, she bears a big chunk of the the credit for this.
Right on, Linda.
Councilman Kaiser.
Well, I echo everybody saying, kudos to Linda and everybody involved, all the cooks in the kitchen, as Peter put it. Railroad Days is going to be June twelfth and thirteenth, and it is with a saddened heart that I'm making the announcement that there will be no soapbox derbies this year. I'm unable to get tires, which is the main thing to protect the kids. I'm looking into next year, I'm looking into getting like there are water balloons that go along the curbs, they're filled with water, it can be drained, stored and put away for the next year, and I won't have to move a thousand or two thousand tires every weekend. And I got some health issues going on, so it's like this is best. I'm also going to try and redesign the cars. I'm going to put handlebars on them so that they're more controllable. So next year, we're going to bring it back bigger, better, stronger and safer. But all the other events for the Railroad Days are are going to be happening, so I encourage everybody to come out. That's the biggest thing I got is that I'm not going to have soapbox, but it's for the best, and it gives us time to reevaluate the show, make the car safer, and and come back and make it a bigger and better event. So thank you for everybody that has supported me and the soapbox and all the kids for the last nine years, ten years, and look forward to next year where we come back, like I said, bigger and better and safer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. Councilman Deutsch.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing. I don't know if the folks around here realize this, but one of the citizens in our city put together a project that is really exciting. It's kind of an association with the Rotary Club, but Allison Lashewski has put in a grant and received a grant of twenty-seven thousand dollars to go down to Talendali Park and have twenty interactive exhibits around the different things down there and a large map that, a revised map when you come in. And I just think she deserves a lot of credit for coming up with the idea, putting in the energy, putting in the paperwork and making it all happen. So congratulations to her, and we can watch that unfold. Besides that, I really don't have anything else, so I'll be brief. I'll surprise everyone and be brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. Councilwoman Lukeysey.
I will not be brief. For the sake of time, so as Todd mentioned, I had a meeting with John Harch and Tom Hesaldin's on the Mossbrough Falls Project, just coordinating some next steps for that. Really, it's been the Trails Association and Todd really working together to get the engineering diagrams into Union Pacific. Hopefully, the second round of diagram review is going to be really good because Union Pacific has agreed, once the diagrams are ready to go, that that we will enter into lease agreements, which is really exciting. We met on the prospect of applying for some parks funding, and the Trails Association and myself are looking at probably applying for two separate grants instead of doing one grant for the project and creating the trail and doing a grant for that because it's further along in the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA process. So the other part of it is starting some public engagement and fact finding for different supporting features for the area above at Hedge Creek. So I know we've all talked about parking, but we're going to do some kind of engagement for different types of services and features for above up there that could go under a separate grant. Working on that. There's a program called Our Town, which is a National Endowments of the Arts Program, which is a grant funded program to help with community enrichment programs. I have done a couple trainings and met with the representative for our area. You look at applying for a grant around design guidelines. I know we've kind of brought that up a couple of times in the past, but the the funding for that allows us to apply for, you know, any type of thing that's going to enhance the city. And so one of the things we've brought up in the past is looking at our historic design guidelines for the downtown, but possibly also looking at some design guidelines for the rest of the city as well, you know, really trying to look at different features that we can modernize and some of the historic pieces for some new developments. So when new developments come into town, they're designed in a way that are cohesive to the rest of the city. They were really excited about the project. The project would not get funded until next year, so this is a longer way out, but it's ability for us to possibly hire an architectural firm to put together those design standards and guidelines, which will be really helpful, especially if and when we move forward with the bid for the Downtown Business Improvement District. The next one is I was contacted by the National Passenger Rail Association, and they're looking for input from communities that are served by passenger rail like Amtrak. So I'm going to request a future agenda item to talk about passenger rail, just different, they just basically want some more information because this federal administration is looking at passenger rail more thoroughly in terms of funding, and they want to hear from communities like ours if there's anything that we would like to see in terms of service changes, station changes, or if we want to keep how it is right now. The next one is the notice of financing availability was put out, also known as a NOFA, for housing funding for the city of Dunsmere for the next five years. So if you know, this is similar to that Senate Bill Two program that we've applied for to update our housing element of the general plan. They just announced the funding for all the cities and counties in the state, and so we're probably looking at funding from the program of about around eighty-four to eighty-five thousand dollars a year that we can spend on programming to stimulate housing production. Part of that could be rehabilitation, part of that could be going towards, you know, a number of different housing programs. So I brought that to Todd's attention, but also kind of watching that funding source to see if there's any future projects we can apply for for housing stimulation. The other one is on the subject of cameras. It was brought to my attention from some residents that we're seeing an uptick in, well, I mean, we've always kind of seen an uptick come summer, but needles being left around the community, and so people are talking about possibly raising money or trying to work with the city for surveillance cameras in the downtown area, and I know that I talked to Todd about this already. I think the cameras on City Hall and a couple of other places would be a really great idea to help with some of those issues, people being downtown. The other thing too is Todd let me know that the city of Dunsmere has received a secure and safe needle depository, I believe.
Yep, that's a big one. We received a grant from Siskiyou County, and we have a large Sharps container, and I'm going to put up some signs around town for those that, you know, that will adhere to it, that if, you know, if they're using needles to take them down to the location.
Yeah.
The only thing you'd want to make sure of there is that you don't have a camera right above that.
That's one thing that, yeah, that's what we're going to have on a scope feed.
Well, honestly, there's a lot of really good research out there that if you do give a safe depository box, it does help lower the overall litter from, you know, needle usage in the community. And there is some really good research showing that if you do put signs up, depending on how the language is put together. Sergeant Kubowitz just let me know, as of January two thousand twenty-one, possessions of needles is not a crime anymore, just FYI, that's information to know. But there is a lot of really good research coming out that when you place signs locating that for drug users, that you can use certain types of language like, please go and deposit your needles at this location to prevent the harm of children and animals specifically, that it does show that there is a lot more compliance with that, so there's different ways to deal with it. And frankly, you know, substance abuse is a huge issue, and it's it stems from a lot of mental health issues. You know, in my experience, a lot of people who have addiction, it's really just not being able to deal with mental illness and and traumatic experiences in an effective manner. And, you know, a lot of those people don't want other people to get hurt typically or to become addicts themselves, and so, you know, any way that we can keep needles off the street is a really good way of moving forward and understanding that the problem of drug addiction isn't because of the drugs necessarily, it's because of a lot of mental health and mental abuse and not having those social services available. By the way, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Check that out. Finally, the last thing is that the Community Planning Assistance Team Program, also known as CPAT, is a program through the American Planning Association that is a program through the American Planning Association um that allow or that allows communities to apply for different of planning programs to empower their residents and local officials um to do good planning in their community. And I was going to put in for us to see if we would be able to get um some expertise from the American Planning Association to help with the visioning process. It's a pro bono program, so it's not a grant. It's basically we get connected with other um planners from a senior level who are doing this on their volunteer time to help us put together the tools and different community promotion or community engagement uh items uh to move forward with that. So I was going to put in for that program for the visioning sessions and hopefully we can get that granted and we can have some additional planning assistance to uh do those different visioning pieces for.
Juliana, have you thought about uh tapping the Ford Foundation?
I have not. I can reach out to them too. That might be, it might be a good partnership because we'll definitely need funds for, you know, just meals or, you know, materials to facilitate those, but I'll look into the Ford Foundation too.
Yeah, I've got, and Crystal Ashton's a local person to talk to there, but if you need any help on that, I can help you with that.
Yeah, I'll I'll let you know. I think it'd be nice, but that's it.
I'm the guy that understood that word pro bono. I like that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lukeysey. Um, I'd just like to say, um, on the note of the Dunsborough Farmers Market opening shortly, the official open date, I believe, is June seventeenth. And it'll run for a couple months um every Thursday from, I think it's, was it um three to seven, I believe the hours are. So everybody uh support that. I know um there's a lot of great programs there where people can even exchange their um food vouchers for tokens at the farmer's market, so really is an inclusive, wonderful way to stay healthy and enjoy a good food of the area. Um, I'd like to thank uh Big Dave and all of the many people um who supported the repainting of the seventeen twenty seven. I recently uh got to show it to a younger cousin of mine who hadn't ever been close to trains before at night with it all lit up. And um she was very enamored of it. Uh, she knows what she wants to do when she grows up. Dave, it would have just been a dark, you know, a little huddled, rusty heap of metal if you hadn't made it look so good, so I deeply appreciate that. And um a lot of other people are seeing it too as they come through Dunsmere and really appreciating our history.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I I gotta say, all I did was help. I didn't do the painting. That was Taggart's painting. But the whole thing, this whole thing was ramrodded by the passing of our good friend Bruce Petty. The thing was spearheaded by his wife Cheryl Petty, who did an amazing job with our friends, the Signors and 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 just everybody. And I would just, I'm just proud to be a little part of it, but yeah. Give them all props. They did a good job.
Definitely, and and it's showing. People are taking notice as they pass through our town. Uh, on that note, I'd like to thank um Public Works Department of Dunsmere, uh Bill and Brian and and all the guys, but I I see them out there uh working on sidewalks. Uh, it looks like there's quite a bit of progress. Um, you know, clearly everything remains when it comes to sidewalks, but they're working hard and they've repainted lines and um I do think they're doing a good job prepping our place for the summer tourist season. Um, Councilman Art, you have a question?
Why, as we're having this conversation, what are the prospects for the community pool having a season this summer?
Well, on that note, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
They had a meeting at five o'clock this evening before this meeting. Um, we did not get the three we needed, but we did get two loaned from us from weed. We are going to have a, we're gonna have a season, but it's gonna be a I forgot the word he used, limited schedule, I think he said. But we are going to have a season. Thank God.
All right.
Thank you.
That's very good news indeed. Um, let's see. I guess the only other thing was um on code enforcement, I know there's a lot of growing pains and a lot of people feeling as if, you know, they're being harassed or um cities after them relative to us enforcing our code. And I'd just like to remind everyone that, you know, what we've experienced um much to Dunsborough's detriment is um, I don't know exactly how many years, but at least thirty, forty years without consistent coherent code enforcement. Um, possibly Dunsborough's entire existence. So um, we've got a backlog of things and you know, blights on our society bring the whole community down slowly but surely, and I think everyone can recognize the the really big problem properties and wants those enforced, but it begins with these um smaller codes and fractions. Everyone just have patience uh with this whole process. I wanna commend our code enforcement efforts, our our officer and city manager and the whole city staff for uh dealing with a um very large blight on Branstetter. Um, I walked a couple evenings ago down there and for the first time in my life, that house was cleaned up. Um, I know it took tremendous effort, um, but.
It took dump trucks. What are you talking?
Yeah, dump trucks, dump trucks full. Um, but the city is committed to this. Um, and I'm very proud to be part of a city that's um actively defending itself uh against these public nuisances. So thank you, guys, everyone. I'm really appreciative of that.
I'd like to commend them as well while we're on that, sir.
Yeah, and uh there's a lot more to come. And you know, if we take the worst houses and turn them slowly into the best, um, you know, as a society, we're gonna end up with a really beautiful city. I also wanna, you know, let everyone know, I believe the short term rentals is either going to the planning commission or just went to the planning commission for consideration. Um, I just wanted to encourage anyone who's already operating an Airbnb or short term rental here in Dunsmere. Um, you know, even if, you know, new new rules are going to apply and are coming, but in the meantime, register with the City of Dunsmere. You know, it doesn't cost you that much to register. Um, I encourage everyone to register their dogs, register their buildings, you know, go above board. It's gonna be a lot easier in the long run uh to get the information out before you end up in a situation where you are fined. So uh if everyone could do that, and that's all I've got for this evening. Uh, we can move on to all business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A point of interest in in that, and I think I'm speaking for not only this council, but for all councils in the past. Um, we we take this job, we get on council and we have an outcry from the community for a code enforcement officer. We jump through hoops. We do our best to find a code enforcement officer. And when we get him, he's doing his job and the city wants to condemn us for hiring a code enforcement officer.
No, it's it's not the city. It's just that there's growing pains. I mean, we all know it, but the reality is
Growing pains.
For the number one complaint, my first year on city council, loose dogs running around town biting people. And that is almost entirely mitigated um by our excellent code enforcement, so I think that speaks for itself.
All right.
All right, uh. All right, let's move forward out of comments then to our approval of the, or sorry, committee reports.
We did have a point. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I have a report on the rate study task force.
Excellent.
Uh, so we met and um we are kind of in agreement now with the the framework that we're gonna be putting forward in terms of numbers, approaches and et cetera. And uh in our next meeting, which will be taking place, I think in the middle of June, um, we're we're going to work on putting together the presentation that will explain everything, uh of course, to the council, but to everybody else and how to lay that out and how to communicate it effectively. So that's our next task and assuming that that goes well, then we'll be bringing in um our presentation, our recommendations before the council. I believe then probably in July, but we're working on the data right now, bringing together several different elements and we'll be bringing our recommendations forward then.
Thank you. Oh, you said July?
Well, again, I'm thinking July, but that's based on the idea that we have a mid, a meeting in mid-June and so that's probably when it'll be, yes, sir.
Okay, so no hope of um correcting um.
No, but in in the longer run, we think we've got it nailed down where that's not gonna be the big issue, so um we should be fine going forward, I think.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee.
I apologize. I was unable to make it.
Okay, um, so yeah, so Finance Committee meeting, we met on Monday. Uh, we started a uh off with a conversation about the fis- the two-year fiscal budget that we're gonna review and offer recommendations for. Blake wasn't quite done with the document, but we have scheduled special meeting. Uh, I believe our special meeting is scheduled for um June seventh and Blake's gonna have everything done for us to review then. And then we moved into a discussion on the US Bank. Uh, Blake is reaching out to the different banks that are in the region to take a look at their different um financing needs or financing fees. Um, he's also planning to do kind of a engagement piece on that to the Finance Committee and possibly the City Council about if we need anything different um within our relationship with the bank that we use for the city's finances. And then um I'm trying to find my notes, which I apologize, I didn't have those up right away. Well, here we go. So the other thing that we're gonna discuss is we're agendizing a discussion on what the Finance Committee's recommendation would be to the City Council on a reserve policy. Um, so we brought up that the city does, the city kind of follows a loose reserve policy of trying to shoot for twenty percent to twenty-five percent reserve. Uh, one of the reasons why this came up is that our revenues are up significantly this year, which is really, really good. Um, but immediately the Finance Committee went into, well, just because the finance revenues are up, we don't wanna necessarily start spending that money. We wanna make sure that we are looking at our high priority projects in our capital improvements plan, looking at high priority planning projects and also making sure that we have a healthy reserve for the future in case we do have um a situation where we have a poor uh summer or, you know, see a de- decrease in sales.
Or law enforcement costs increase?
Yeah, correct. That was also brought up. So uh we're gonna take a look at the reserve policy and some recommendations for when um we feel the city should dip into the reserve so that we become a little bit more fiscally responsible with that. Um, we also discussed that Rico under one of the grants um is looking to revamp the planning application fees because there's a big um difference in the planning application fees versus the time that Rico spends on those applications and we're not necessarily recouping all of that time for those developments. Um, we are gonna bring back the audit concerns to make sure that those were all addressed with the new um two-year budget. That's gonna come to us in June. And then uh we also typically have an item for probably uh either the second meeting in June or the first meeting in July to talk about utility billing and what our status is for delinquent payments at this point because of COVID. And just to get a better idea on what's going on with the utility billing situation.
And if I can add one more thing, we talked about developing a five-year SIP or uh capital improvement plan.
Yes, yeah. And by the way, our special meeting's gonna be June seventh at four P. So that's when we're gonna talk about the two-year process and review that.
That only leaves one meeting for City Council to approve after that, unless we do.
Yeah, unfortunate, unfortunately, we're still just kind of working on that. Um, but we are gonna review the first fiscal year first and then we'll move to the second year, so maybe we can present them one at a time, but we'll we'll talk about that at Finance.
Okay, so we're probably not quite make our July first, but we do have something in place, at least the advantage of a two-year budget to begin with.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so yeah, so we're we're getting there. Um, uh Blake also informed us that he's been doing a lot of uh one-on-one training with Charlie, so he's getting a lot better at some of the other financing pieces that the audit originally brought up. So uh again, that's how we brought up the audit um recommendations, and so we're gonna review those. Uh, make sure they're being addressed as soon as possible.
And he's got a good start on a um finance standard operating procedures, which is another one of the comments and
Excellent.
And also uh is part of that how, what our policy is in dealing with federal grants, which is another one of the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so overall, Blake's been hauling butt on a lot of the recommendations from the auditor, so that's why we're like, you know, if you don't have the two-year budget quite yet, we'll we'll give you another week or two.
Are you saying he's been doing a good job hauling butt?
He is. He's doing a really great job. All right, that's it for the Finance Committee.
All right, thank you. Uh, were there any other committees that met during this time?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, uh, thank you so much. Let's move forward then into um approval of the minutes for the May sixth meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the May sixth twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second.
All right, there's motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Uh, one teeny correction, uh page six in our agenda packet. Um, the presentation that Juliana gave about economic development, she gets identified in the minutes as Mayor Lukeysey, which we all get, but really.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know why I'm apologizing. I didn't do it, but I.
I make a motion.
With that, I'm happy to say that it's all good.
It's the seventh line down in the top paragraph.
All right, uh, so we got a motion to approve the uh amended minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move forward to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have the check register for uh May first through May fourteenth. Uh, are there any questions concerning the check register or any of the consent agenda items? I see none.
To approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion of the item? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have no public hearing tonight, item nine, so that brings us to item ten, old business. Item A is decision on whether to allow fireworks this year within the city limits of Dunsmere, uh the jurisdiction for which we are responsible. Um, this is just kind of a follow-up from a previous uh conversation that we had both last year and last meeting. We were discussing a possible alternative. And we thought it was unfair to make any decision on this without giving uh public, you know, the option to attend and a comment on this issue. I know a lot of people are attached to their fireworks, but we're kind of considering the growing consensus among council that um despite our love for fireworks, it's not quite worth the risk, and if last fire season was bad, this current one um looks to be much worse, so. There any further discussion of this item?
I was hoping we would have a resolution prepared to vote on. Is there one or no?
Especially, especially on the Fire Chief's recommendation.
We don't.
Did we have one from last year?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Did we do one from last year?
So.
I don't remember if we did a resolution last year.
I don't think we did.
I don't remember. I think we just, I thought we did have a resolution, but um at the very least, we can give direction.
I'm I'm, if it's all the same, I'm in favor of the Fire Chief's recommendation not to have fireworks this year.
Recommendation, since we're at this point, we're all into discussion. We don't have any questions. I recommend public comment.
Yeah, public comment, I think, is the main uh point of this, and then we'll we'll discuss. Um, let's open up on public. I. Okay.
Sorry, um, Dan said he might be joining us. I see a number on there. I don't know if that's Dan and if he wants to comment before we open it up.
Please.
Whoever is on the line, the phone number, it's a star nine to unmute, or a star six to unmute.
With the five three zero? Zero nine two.
I don't think that's the um Fire Chief, you guys. Okay.
All right, well, and his recommendation to remind people was, um, it's just probably not worth the risk and generally speaking, he finds Fourth of July a concerning time period when it comes to fire danger. So let me open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment on whether to allow uh fireworks in the City of Dunsmere this Fourth of July, um, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button or hit star nine if you're calling in.
We do have one public comment. Jeannie Baker.
Yes.
Good evening. So I thought that people were gonna see if they could get together. a very safe situation in the ballpark. And other than that, I agree with the Fire Chief.
All right, thank you so much, Jeannie Baker. Appreciate that. Is there any further public comment? I've seen none. I will close the public comment on this item. Just to respond quickly to that public comment, we discussed that exact possibility at the last meeting. And upon thinking about the liability that the city would be taking on and the lack of coverage that the Fire Chief experiences each year at that day, he decided he's definitely against the city sponsoring or allowing any dedicated area for the fireworks in a fire season like the one we're in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have Dan Padilla on the phone. He is on speakerphone. Mr. Mayor, we're, I mean, Mr. Fire Chief, we're talking about discussion whether to allow fireworks this year. You are on speakerphone. Please address our councils.
We're not able to hear that.
Big Dave, it's, it's okay. He can go about his evening. We, we have what he said in the minutes that we just approved.
Okay.
Had enough to join us last time and was very clear on his thoughts. But if anyone's interested, you can call City Hall and get hold of him with message. We can discuss it further. Thank you, though.
Thank you. All right, I just thought we'd want to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we did last meeting, but thank you for that. All right, closing the public comment on that, is there more thoughts on allowing fireworks this year?
Well, procedurally, are we just going to do a voice motion or are we going to have a draft resolution? I strongly favor supporting the Fire Chief. His third point was last fire season and 4th of July, he had as many residents thanking him for the ban as being concerned that they couldn't shoot off their fireworks. So it really, to me, is an education cycle in the days remaining before the 4th of July weekend. But I hope the council acts expeditiously to repeat last year's ban and to publicize it. That is no messing around. Whether it's the sheriff or the fire department that's going to come out. If you're shooting off fireworks in Dunsmere, you're going to get a visit. It's not okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Deitch.
Thank you, sir. I, I've been thinking about this and I wasn't sure when to bring it up in the meeting, but this whole concept of the fire season and worrying about that conjoining with the idea that we're a tourist town. I, I get, I feel that we should ban them, but the most important thing I think is we need to find a way to communicate to the tourists that are coming into the town and staying in our, our hotels and motels, what the rules are that we don't allow them and that we are worried about fire. I think that should be part, there should be some kind of an outreach taken to the people that come in and out because a lot of the times they're going to be the ones that are shooting off the fireworks and probably had no idea that we have a rule against it.
I, I completely agree, Councilman Deitch, and my only real issue with this ban, I'm fairly neutral on the subject just because the data doesn't support. There are a lot of fires started by safe, sane fireworks on city streets. However, the, the, you know, safe and sane fireworks can easily become illegal fireworks and get out of control, et cetera. But I honestly know that Dunsmere, I know it from last year's experience. I mean, yes, we were judicious and banned fireworks. Did that stop fireworks? Maybe a certain percentage of them, but I think I defy anyone to walk around just after nightfall in Dunsmere on the 4th of July and tell me they don't see fireworks. I think, you know, this is a very difficult thing for us to enforce, you know, with our, our small staff and our mostly volunteer fire department. So I guess, you know, I'm not saying I'm, I'm not against this ban, but you know, it's, it's great for us to say this, but if we don't have an effective means, it's just yet another ordinance that we, we can't, you know, back up with the strength of enforcement.
I have a suggestion for you guys to consider is I think it would make sense. We didn't have one last year, but bringing back a resolution consent at the next council meeting and that we make the suggestion that those with short-term rentals to post them along with your other rules.
Yeah.
This time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including the hotels with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That would help a little bit.
I, I grew up with a father that had these huge fireworks with mortars and, you know, our backyard. So I, I grew up loving them, but the idea of watching the town burn down just is too scary to think about.
Yeah, and mortars like that certainly do pose a danger. And, you know.
Me and Matthew.
Already illegal, though, I'd point out.
I want to see that again. Matthew, remember Paradise?
Yeah, I, I do, but that was not started by safe and sane fireworks on the street either, but.
Still a burnt up town.
All right, well, I think we have a more or less a consensus on this item. Would we like to farm it as a resolution? Or no, bring back a consent? Okay, that, that sounds good.
I would support just putting, I, I would motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution banning the sale and use of fireworks in the city of Dunsmere for the consent agenda at the next meeting.
May I amend that, ma'am? Consider, what I'd like to amend it to consider is that we also ask them to come up with a set of
Communication recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, no problem. I got it.
All right, I'll second that then.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's move into item B, Planning Commission candidates. Very sadly, Commissioner Powers passed away and is no longer able to serve in her vital role in the community on the planning commission. We have a number of candidates tonight. City manager, would you like to introduce the topic?
Well, I think you've actually done a good job. We have an opening on the planning commission. And we are very lucky in that we, I don't even know what the total is now, do we have six applicants? And I'm sure all of you in reading through your packet have read the resumes and, and applications on why folks want to serve their community in this capacity. And, you know, I think I would just kick it back to you, Mayor Bryant, to, you know, to kick off interviews with our candidates.
Actually, yes.
Um, I recommend that if it's okay with you that we ask the, the city manager to spend about 30 seconds just saying what the planning commission does, because there's a lot of confusion as to what the planning commission does and what they would be doing if they were on the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, it's an excellent idea.
Yeah, so on the planning commission, you are, as a member, you are having things brought before you in terms of how you interpret ordinances that are on the book. Consider new ordinances, consider new developments and design guidelines for the community and really are the keeper of the way the city looks and the way that the, the city functions in terms of recommendations on, you know, on new ordinances related to development and urban design.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Wendy, could you actually assist in, maybe in the order in which you have them listed in the agenda packet? Ask each applicant to introduce themselves briefly.
Would you like me to take off the screen sharing? So if people do want to share their video, they can.
I'm sure. It's a good idea.
There we go. I believe the first, or Wendy, do you want me to just roll through the order in the packet?
Um, that'd be fine. I, I think the first applicant is Ms. Jeannie Baker.
Correct.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, Jeannie.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So, all right, so here I am again, applying for a third commission. And we'll see how it goes. I just want to say, obviously, I'm a long-term resident of Dunsmere. And I care about my community. I think I can service and help us. I'm a graduate of the Ford Foundation Leadership Program. I helped our cohort successfully complete a local project in a timely manner. I have mediation experience. Being a world traveler for 40-plus years has given me a broad understanding of many different viewpoints. And I will say that I know the difference between good development and bad, having seen it around the world. So my hat is in the ring again. Thank you, and I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay, next we'll go to Thomas Duncan. I think, Thomas, you are not unmuted, so let me see about unmuting you. Okay, I think you should.
That seems to work now. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening. I, I, I'm not a longtime resident of Dunsmere. We just moved here by choice about two years ago. We fell in love with this entire area. I have a tremendous amount of experience in development, construction, working with government agencies, city, state, federal, large entities. I've probably managed in excess of $500 million worth of construction and development in my career, and I am very interested in helping however I can the city of Dunsmere and its residents. And I think this is the best way for me to help.
All right, thank you so much. Really appreciate your application.
Who's next?
Okay, the next applicant is Carlos, also known as Marcos Sanchez.
Hi there. Thanks for seeing me today. My name's Carlos Marcos Sanchez. I go by Marcos or Mark. I was born in Dunsmere and just currently moved back after 15 years. Just starting a family and getting back into town and thought I could have maybe a fresh perspective on the town. And I've lived in a few different cities and seen some things that work and don't work, so.
Thank you. We appreciate your application.
The next applicant is Michael Sanchez.
Everyone, yeah, my name is Michael Sanchez, and that's actually my brother who spoke last. Yeah, my family is here and I'm also raising a little one here. And I've chosen to return to my community. I was also raised here in Dunsmere and Mount Shasta. And I was fortunate enough to achieve a degree, bachelor's degree from San Francisco State University. In my, in my day job, I support a solar nonprofit that installs solar across the state for income-qualified residents. And I think that I could contribute to the planning commission and implementing some improvements around the city. And yeah, I look, I look forward to, to participating in any way possible, hopefully to join this committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Michael. We really appreciate your application.
Next applicant is Chrissy Somore.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a newer resident. I've only been here about nine months. But I bring a wealth of experience in community planning. I have a degree in community and regional planning from Missouri State University. And I've been a practicing planner for the past 20 years. And I have worked in several small communities throughout the Western U.S. And most of them have had Torres, some have some significant portion of the economic contributions to the community. And most of them were, I think, like Dunsmere and that they're just real gems. And kind of, I, I, I was able to be part of teams that were developing design guidelines and land development regulations to prepare for big booms. And so I, I kind of feel like that's where Dunsmere is right now. Um, I won't go into all the detail on my, you know, experience, but I just feel like I have a breadth working for both local government agencies and nonprofits and even the private sector doing development. Um, and I think my, my biggest passion really is to pull together community members and make sure there's good representation across the community and really try to work to engage all the members of the community, especially like the folks that are on the call tonight that really want to be involved and give them a, a role and a voice in how this community develops and make sure that, you know, the, the long-term residents, the folks that have been here for many years are born and raised here, feel like they have a strong stake, stake in how their community grows. And so I'm very passionate about that. And I really appreciate all of your service because I know it's a lot of effort and, and time that you put into things here. So I appreciate that. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your application.
Thanks, Chrissy. And our final applicant is Mr. Dylan Lennon.
Good evening, Dylan.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say thank you for taking the time to consider me. This is another opportunity that I'm going to take to try to, excuse me, help the community of Dunsmere. And I have four years' experience on the Chamber of Commerce, 10 years' experience as a business owner downtown, and I'm a 20-year resident and property owner. I have experience in construction codes, all of that. So I think I could be of a positive help, and I look forward to either helping or supporting whoever you do choose. Thank you guys for your time and have a good evening.
All right, thank you so much.
And it looks like I just let Peter Arth back in. I'm not sure how long Peter was not with us. Peter, can you hear us?
I got kicked off for about five minutes.
Okay, and did you hear any of the planning commission applicants?
Uh, I left off with Chrissy's presentation.
Okay, so you just missed Mr. Lennon's.
Yes.
But were you able to read his application and resume?
I have read his application and resume, and I know him personally.
Okay, and he said he's more than happy to continue building a strong community in Dunsmere as he has for the last 20, 10, and four years respectively for different roles.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone, for applying. I'm a little overwhelmed with the amount of interest often for these volunteer positions to serve the public. We only have one, two, three maybe applicants. So this is just an amazing example of the people we have here. We're going to shape Dunsmere for years to come. So I encourage everyone, even if you aren't appointed tonight, because clearly there's only one position available to stay active and. and apply for the next committee that comes up. There's a lot of work and a lot of public input that needs to happen for democracy to function, especially in a small town like ours.
Mayor Brian, may I ask a question of all the applicants really quick?
You can, yes. I was going to open it up to public comment, but do your question.
Okay, yeah, it'll be quick. I, you know, work up in Mount Shasta as city planner, and it's a question that we ask applicants up there, which I think it's a really important question. So my, my question to everybody is, as a planning commissioner, sometimes you have to talk about very controversial items or items that can become extremely emotional. So as a planning commissioner, would you handle working together with the other commissioners on an item that is politically and emotionally charged?
Go down the line.
Okay, I guess it's my turn again, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a problem for me. I'm a retired minister. I have mediation in my background. I'm a world traveler. As many of you know, I own an international tour company and am very open to all points of view. I have been traveling for over forty years and am completely open to everybody's viewpoint. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ginny.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, thank you. I think the best way I can answer that question is for approximately forty years, I have done nothing but manage large commercial construction projects, and I have spent most of that time doing dispute resolution and resolving problems and finding solutions, working with architects, designers, owners, other trade contractors, and companies that have hired me. So I leave politics and I leave emotion out of it and deal only with risks, opportunities, and solutions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
Marcos Sanchez.
I, I received my undergraduate degree in communication with a minor in sociology, but all I can say is that I, I would just truly listen and try to hear what people are saying and try to come to the best conclusion possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And Michael Sanchez.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, I've been pretty honored to work with a wide variety of California residents, which is an incredibly diverse state, which has an incredibly diverse range of voices and perspectives. And I've also had the opportunity to live in Dunsmere and Siski County for twenty-plus years of my life. So I also understand the perspective of residents here and life here. So, yeah, I guess my main, my main point is to understand people's perspectives and, and why they feel a certain way and try and come and try and communicate with one another why we hold those values or why we hold, why we hold those, why we feel so strongly about those, those things and, and understand one another and come to a conclusion in that, in that manner, not disrespect them. So it's about respect.
Thank you, Michael.
And Chrissy.
Yeah, so I deal with this pretty regularly in my role, in my roles over the years. And I would say that it all comes down to developing a really good process and having good facilitation to create dialogue. So a couple of things in a planning commission setting, I think, is important to, for those issues that you think are going to be really contentious. I believe it's important to, to, to have special meetings on those topics and, and have community meetings where you start out with information, because a lot of folks come to the table with charged emotions because they might have, you know, one perspective or one understanding on the overall issue and may not have a comprehensive understanding. And so getting a group together of the, the experts or the folks from the city staff to inform them of the, the issue and make sure that all kind of potential contentious items are addressed to the extent that they can be with education is really important. And then, and then giving time for public comment and, you know, doing a lot of breakout sessions where you have a small group that's able to discuss and, and gather information. And then really, because that makes people feel heard, right? And so for those big, those big hot, hot items, I think that's, that's really important. And then, you know, once people feel like they've been heard and there's still not resolution, I think that's when it comes down to just really, for me, as if I was to be appointed and, and making a tough decision, to just really be very transparent about why. And I may not agree with a certain cohort of the community on an issue, but I, I want to make sure that they really understand where I'm coming from and that, that I'm demonstrating that I have heard all sides, really understand the issue, understand where they're coming from, and, and also let them know why I still am, you know, choosing or making the recommendation that I'm making to the council. So again, I think just, you know, process is really important, making sure people are feeling heard and that there's transparency.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chrissy. And then lastly, we have Mr. Dylan Lennon. Let me make sure Dylan's unmuted. Okay, go ahead, Dylan.
Hey, guys. Thank you again for considering me. I know most of you personally, and I've had a few of these discussions with you through the twenty years I've lived here, at least a few of you. For me, it's not about what I want or what I like or what my political beliefs are. It's what's best for the community. And in my twenty years here, I think I've shown that that's the case, that I do what's best for the community, whether it's providing free meals in the middle of a snowstorm or spending four years on the chamber or sweeping sidewalks downtown with my business. I'm sure you all know that, and once again, I just wanted to say thank you for considering me, and I look forward to helping the town. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining, everybody.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to open this item up for public comment. I feel I would like to make a public comment on the appointment of the planning commission post. Go to the Participants tab and hit the Raise Your Hand function. Or if you're calling in, hit star nine. All right, I don't see any.
Really?
I will close public comment and open up discussion with the, the basic thought that Dunsmere is very blessed tonight to have six able people wishing to serve in the planning commission, and that it's very encouraging to see this interest and commitment from so many people, so many diverse people with different backgrounds, different places in life, and that that's what we really need, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the future. Thank you. Councilman Arth?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do want to say several things, and I've lived in Dunsmere for now almost thirteen years. And when I moved up here from the Bay Area, Dunsmere was down on its luck. Nobody wanted to serve on the city council, and there was neither money nor staff to support the planning commission. So in my view, the planning commission was passive and ineffective. They really did not have much of a role unless the city of Dunsmere asked them to do something. And I am an outspoken advocate of trying to preserve the historic district, and there simply wasn't the vision or the plan or the person power to deal with that issue. And so it is of immense satisfaction to me that we have this roster of highly qualified, young, diverse candidates that want to serve the city of Dunsmere with the notion, in my view, of failure to plan is a plan to fail. So whoever gets selected, and there's nothing magic about the number of planning commissioners, were we to expand the planning commission and actually pay more attention to preserving the historic district, that'd be dandy with me. Supposedly, there are two members of the planning commission that look out for the protective ordinances being enforced. And I have participated in several planning commission meetings, and it just doesn't happen. So we have Rico Tinsman, a talented city planner. We have Todd Yuha as a talented city manager. We have a member of the city council with graduate degrees and all sorts of planning. This, to me, is a tipping point for the city. So I simply thank all of you for throwing your hat in the ring. I'm going to be deferential to the preferences of the mayor and Juliana Lucchese, because I'm hoping they will run for second terms. And Dunsmere will actually leap ahead in the next four or five years to become the community all of us want it to be. So thank you. I've made it an open secret that I'm not going to be seeking office again. The seat that I occupy will be available in November of next year. So all of you have a demonstrated passion for serving your community. If you don't end up in a planning commissioner's seat tonight, please don't stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arth. Councilman Kaiser?
Oh, man, you had to go and pick on me next. First thing I want to say is, Peter, it has been my honor to serve in the ring with you, sir. I've learned from you. I admire you and I respect you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You have been an asset to this town, and for that, I thank you. And that's just from me to you. Okay, so there's, there's one person that I was kind of favoring. Is this where we talk about candidates now?
Yes, you certainly may.
First, first, pretty soon, we're going to have to get down to the nuts and bolts of this deal. And there's one person that I kind of asked to throw his hat in the ring, and because I thought he is the perfect candidate. However, after hearing what Peter Arth has said, I think my person has a better shot at that after listening to all the candidates. This, this Chrissy girl, she's a planner. She, that's what she does. She's got a degree in planning, and I think it would behoove us not to put a planner in a planning position. She got words. She got words. She got words that she used, like, oh, my God, bringing the community together, rallying, and then making sure that she's got everybody on board. I can't even remember the words, but it was like, oh, my God. I looked, I look to work with my friend on the next city council, and I will support this man when he gets there. But right now, in my heart, I'm sorry, bro, but this girl's got, she's got, she's got my vote. She's got a degree in planning. That's what we need. And I got bigger plans for you, bro. So if it comes down to, I like this Chrissy girl. I think she's the best choice. She is a planner. Hell, we're trying to get somebody for the planning commission. The key word is planning. This is what she does for work. I'm not trying to hurt anybody's feelings. The two brothers, man, we got to hang out. You guys seem pretty cool. We got to get together one of these days, as well as everybody else. But I want to thank everybody for throwing their hat in the ring. I'm not trying to step on nobody's toes or anybody's feelings. But I, I feel that in this case, I got plans for my, for my guy that I think will be great. And right now, for planning, I, I like this Chrissy girl. That's, that's my, my, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. Councilwoman Juliana?
I mean, I'm a planner, so I'm kind of, I'm partial to other planners. I do have to say, it is really, really great to see six very different people coming up and being interested in this seat. I really hope that you stay with us, and, and maybe you'll be up for consideration for a future seat. I know they get renewed, I believe, every four years or so, and they alternate. But also, if you're still interested in, in things, we also have a solid waste committee coming up to talk about solid waste services in the city. We would love to have people involved with that from the public. We have our disaster planning advisory committee, if there's any seats open for that. You know, and, and also, you know, planning is, is really cool because it encompasses so many different facets of our lives. I mean, you can be interested in alternative energy. You can be interested in building. You can be interested youth planning and programs there. So I would really encourage everyone, you know, who doesn't get on, if you have a specific area that you're, you're passionate in, you know, that would be a great opportunity for us to work on a project that you could spearhead. I mean, we're always looking for more people to help us with future projects. You know, again, if you're interested in helping with the Moss Brae Trail Project or Parks and Recreation, we have the Parks Board. That's also got a couple of city-appointed positions that are part of it and some that are not. Please, please reach out to some of our other, you know, agencies. I know the library could definitely use some new people as input and help apply for grants. You know, there are so many great organizations in Dunsmere that could use your assistance. We're not the only game in town. And again, the Chamber is a really big one. That would be great for some people who are interested in business development and, you know, have business backgrounds. So I, I'm really happy that we have so many really helpful, really passionate people in the city. You know, I'm going to back Big Dave. It's very easy for me. Chrissy also has AICP certification, which is the American Institute for Certified Planners, which I just got my certification in 2020. And it's a huge deal to get that AICP certification. It takes hours and hours and hours of studying planning law, planning history. And I think she would be a really good addition to the planning commission, so I would, I would second Big Dave in nominating her. And I would be happy to do that when we get to that point, but I want to make sure Mayor Brian and Councilmember Deutsch have a chance to discuss as well. But I really encourage everyone to really look at other organizations we have in the city or look at some of our other committees that we have coming up, and, and we would welcome you on those committees as well.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Councilman Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the reason I asked that question at the beginning, to ask the city manager to talk about what the planning commission does, one of the things that I kind of sensed was that a lot of the people were not aware of the, what could be called the drudgery, if you're not careful, of what the planning commission What could be called the drudgery, if you're not careful, of what the planning commission is really looking at, the nuts and bolts, the, you know, the details and and the arcane aspects of of law and planning. And, uh, so with that in mind, as I was listening, um, I I was, I have to admit, I was, uh, torn between, uh, this, this, uh. Zamora, I'm sorry, I had to turn around and look at that. And at the same time, uh, Mr. Duncan, with the qualifications, both of those were, um, extremely impressive. And as, uh, everybody has said so far, there's ample opportunity for things down the line. Um, I I'm a perfect example. I actually applied for the planning commission myself back in, uh, 2015. And ended up here somewhere down the line when I wasn't accepted there. So, um, with that in mind, um, I guess I will simply say that between Mr. Duncan. And Miss Zamora, I was very impressed and I will go along with, uh, the the nominations as, uh, so far motioned.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. I I'm actually just impressed by the, um, the the depth of different perspectives, ages, et cetera, interested in this planning commission post. I I do think. One thing that interests me very much with Chrissy was the, um. Talk of facilitating an effective meeting. I feel like a lot of small towns have a lot of people that are very interested in participating. But that bringing that sort of skill to the table could be very beneficial, um, for the exact makeup of the planning commission at this point. Again, I I would echo Councilman Deutsch's, um, sentiment, not just for the two, but really for, um, all the candidates. But, um, I'm I'm happy to, um, back any of the people here. So if anyone would like to make a nomination.
Juliana.
I think Big Dave started. I'm gonna step on his tongue.
Big Dave?
Okay. I think her name was Chrissy.
No, you have to get the full name, Mr. Kyle, Mr. Kaiser. It's not that Chrissy girl. It's, uh, Chrissy Zamora. Is that right? Zamora?
Let me put my glasses on then. All right, Bruce.
All right, is there a second?
It's Tom Yor, just.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much. I would like to nominate Ms. Chrissy Tom Yor. To the Dunsmere City Planning Commission.
All right, uh, is there a second?
Juliana.
I second.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, there's a motion and a second, um, there is discussion.
I I just.
Wonderful.
I I just had a procedural question. I note on the application. Chrissy says she lives just outside city limits, but in town. Is that okay?
For commissioners, yes.
Well, wait a second. There's two of them that are allowed to be sphere of influence, right?
I believe it can't be more than, uh.
Ann Towers was out of the city council and she's replacing her seat.
Okay, that's great. That's great.
But thank you for the procedural.
Yeah, but I already checked it out.
Good. Thank you.
We already had this session. Call the roll call, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call vote.
Council. Councilmember Art.
I.
Councilmember Deutsch.
I.
Councilmember Kaiser.
I.
Councilwoman Lucchese.
I.
And Mayor Brian.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone else.
Thank you, everyone.
Again, if you want to talk about solid waste. We're asking for some public to help us with that in the future.
Crickets, crickets.
All right, um, let's move forward into item C, update on solid waste ad hoc committee. Right on cue.
I know. Some might say I planned for that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't.
Okay, hey, gang. So I I. I have to confess that I think I got things backwards when we were talking about the solid waste ad hoc committee. In that I thought we were starting out with our two members, uh, Councilman Art and. Councilman Deutsch, and we were looking for members of the public, and so we advertised and.
Lucchese.
It was Lucchese and Art.
Yes.
Okay, and so.
He likes to talk trash.
No, I am very well aware of that. And. So I was thinking we needed to have our members of the public in place, and we do have one in Mr. Mike Delabana. But, um, we really, I guess, um. What I was told is the plan was to go forward with, uh, discussing the, you know, making the sausage first and seeing where we come out and then. You know, with Councilman Lucchese and and, um, Councilman Art. And, um, you know, and and Diana, and so let's let's schedule something as soon as possible. And we do have one member after we get stuff hammered out and we make the sausage. And then, um, and then our members of the public that want to decide what spices needed to be added. We'll get that in the, in the second half. So if you can all send me, the two of you. Some dates that you are available in the next two weeks, so I can send to Ms. Clemmons. I would appreciate that and we'll set something up. Uh, one thing I'd like to add, though, is, um, since, uh, you know, I, my fault, um, I've allowed some time to elapse. You know, Diana needs to have some certainty in terms of purchasing a new truck. And we have in place already a, um, under the old process, um, an increase that's coming up. Which would allow her to purchase that capital equipment. And if we don't think we're gonna, and I don't think we will by, um, July 1st, have a full agreement in place. I would suggest that, um, just to cover our bases, we sign, um, one more extension. And, um, and then we work our rears off to to get the full contract in place as soon as possible.
Uh, that sounds very reasonable. Are there any other thoughts?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So by signing this extension, what has that got to do with her new truck?
So a couple of things, we already have on the book that she is, um, getting the, um, the next step that was approved in the previous process. And, you know, she called me, um, wanting to make sure that that's still the case. It is. Um, so she's gonna be able to get that truck. So that's one. Number two is, uh, setting up this. First phase of the committee, um, we've lost a little time, so let's try to catch up on it. And third, if we don't think we're gonna hit July 1st. As, um, you know, having this fully executed, let's extend, um, in one more time, the contract. So we're covered for the couple of months until we actually have the full contract, full, long-term contract executed.
It it, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but is the city, Todd, is the city? Are we loaning her the money for the truck? We're putting money up front?
No, we have scheduled annual increases and already the scheduled annual increase come July 1st.
So she could show the bank that she's gonna get more money, get increased, and she could buy her own truck.
Exactly, and that's gonna happen, so she's.
Look, it's the finance committee coming out of me. Just gotta make sure, right?
Yep.
All right, cool.
Really quick, I did find my notes from when we put the ad hoc together and I put them on the screen. So the first one, so basically, right now, we are in goal number one, which is just trying to get a new contract negotiated. And then for those who might be interested in serving member. Basically, we would start expanding to public members and do some public outreach, look at various services for solid waste, which would include. Um, possibly anything from large furniture pickup to Christmas tree pickup to composting green waste pickup, recycling programming and could, you know, do a lot of those different things. Um, so that's kind of, you know, the evolution. And then, you know, after we take a look at some of the services we'd like to do, ultimately. The solid waste committee would be an ongoing quarterly meeting committee that would just take a look at the contract, look at some state mandates for solid waste. Um, and other things for, you know, again, how to improve, and this is similar to our sheriff's contract to a degree. So just to kind of give people a background on what we're talking about.
And just, you know, just, uh, uh, you know, a little tidbit in talking to, um, Diana. It's her recollection that we haven't had a full solid waste contract, um, negotiated since 1973.
Yeah, that's right.
I thought it was the 90s.
No, 70.
Yeah, 73 is what she said.
Yep.
Dear God. Yeah.
Talk about stale cheese.
Hey, it was you that were mentioning, you put this whole waste thing into into like dinner tonight, dude, you know, with hot dogs and sausage and spices.
Yeah, well, I'm starting to smell something rot.
Uh, so just, uh, really quick, uh, we do need to take public comment, but, uh, my, I'm gonna be on staycation. So I'll be in the area from, uh, Wednesday next week until June 2nd. So whenever you want to meet with Diana and and Peter, I am, I am fully available. My friend from Minnesota is coming to visit, so I can dip out for an hour or two and let her dink around. And so I'm I'm very, very open the next two weeks, which is very rare for my schedule.
Great, cool. Hopefully you and everybody else will be able to walk in that room on June 3rd.
Yeah. Let's do it. I'm I'm vaccinated, so.
I'm vaccinated.
All right, well, that's the next item on the agenda, Big Dave.
I had to take advantage of the opportunity.
Definitely. So, um, going back. Uh, do we need any action on this, or is this just an update?
Like she said, it gotta go to public comment, right?
Not if it's just an update.
If it's just a date, we, it's not an action item.
Okay.
Sounded to me like it was an update.
And, um, Councilman Art, if you, uh, you know, for the next couple of days, if you have some dates that'll work for you, throw them out and and I'll pitch them.
I think, Todd, that, uh, you and Juliana have the. More difficult schedules. I only asked that it be sometime in the afternoon, so I'm awake, but other than that. Okay, and I, and I, you know, it's the same discussion. It's the same discussion we had with the planning commission. Um, I'm very excited about the work that Linda and Todd have done to give us grant money. So that whether we do it on our own as the city of Dunsmere or we do it on a regional basis with Mount Chasta. And other neighboring communities. It makes no sense for us to be gathering green waste. And putting it in bins and taking it to a disposable center. And making all the citizens and businesses pay for it. So we will have the resources, hopefully, as we refine the grant request. For chippers. For doing serious work to reduce fuel hazards. We're continuing to work on our pilot project with the community garden and area restaurants to turn their. Green waste into compost. And. The old cabbage leaves will never see a container or Clemmons picking it up. So there really are a lot of opportunities. To first research what the state of California requirements are, because, as I said before, California is drowning in trash. And the recycling programs, because nobody wants to buy tin or glass or plastic. But I would love for us to be a model community in how we manage our solid waste. So I'm excited to be part of it and hope we could really move forward in being responsible citizens.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Art. Um, is there any other comments or discussion regarding the update?
That was well said, Peter. We're gonna be good here. Right on.
All right.
It does get, it does get back to, are we giving up? Are we gonna have a single free disposal day in summer of 2021?
I think what, well.
What I heard from Todd is no, the Clemmons can't afford it.
Yeah.
Well, wow, we need to, uh, do something. Cause that, that free day is one of the big boosts for our fuel reduction.
Like I think Pete was alluding to with, um, the fuel reduction grant, you know, for the years that's that's active. That certainly is an eligible activity is, um, getting a.
Todd, Todd, you, what you're saying is, I I don't mean to interrupt, blah, 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 blah. It ain't got nothing to do with Billy Bob when it get the shit out of the trunk. That's what we got to do.
All right, well, we're not discussing how to reduce fuels in Dunsmere currently, guys. We're discussing the update on the solid waste ad hoc committee, and I think we've strayed a little far. Um, it's all great discussion. I'm sure the committee is gonna get to work. Um, you all have plenty of time to comment and inspire in the future, Dave. Is there any more comments on the update?
Ready to meet ASAP.
Thank you. Um, speaking of meeting, um, meeting in person perhaps, let's move to item D, revisit in-person meetings slash hybrid model. Todd?
So over, um, the last two or three weeks, we've tested out a number of systems. And we've found out that we've had issues in terms of seeing counselors up at the dais and, um, being able to hear clearly. Across a laptop from the mics that we have up front. Um, you know, as we've tried a bunch of different things, we think we have a solution. And right as, um, we're talking. Paris and, uh, you know, a professional in, um, doing these kind of things are over actually running. Um, a recording of this meeting to Siskiyou Media Council, as well as testing out a new system where we purchased a 65-inch. Uh, flat screen TV that we're able to to move around where we need it, operated by a laptop. And with, um, microphones and a new camera that has a fisheye lens that will do everything we need it to do. Um, and so they're just on our maiden voyage as we're doing this meeting. So.
Wow. Congratulations.
So we'll have it, it should be figured out this evening. We'll be back, um, you know, at the next meeting, so we'll be able to do it hybrid. I just want to warn that I know some people are not gonna want to come back in person, including some, um, you know, uh, staff folks. At certain times that just want to protect their family, even though they're vaccinated because they have little kids. There were various other reasons, but, um, you know, we have the opportunity to come back in person on, I believe it is June 3rd.
All right. Sounds wonderful. And we'll just have to, like we did when we first went to all Zoom meetings or digital, um, kind of workshop it and make it work. But I I think it's, um, gonna be a permanent benefit, um, to how we interact with the constituents and the public.
I think keeping the Zoom would be really great, too. I think it, you know, for some people, this is probably a preferred way of of viewing the meetings and and participating. So I I really hope we could probably do a permanent hybrid model. Just because.
I second that emotion.
Yeah, you know, the more accessible we make our meetings, I think the better. And and so, you know, I'm I'm really thankful for staff going forward with this. I'm super supportive. Uh, I think I said at the last meeting, you know, I would be super happy to spend the money to make sure that this is a really well-working system. And that we're being as accessible as possible to people. Um, and you know, if there are any members of the public out there as well, who have different abilities that may not, you know, hybrid may not work for them or, you know. Um, may need additional technology support. I think that's something we should totally work on. And, you know, this, this whole participation and process should be open to everybody.
So. I have a question for Todd.
Yes.
Todd, have you clarified, um, with SMC, are they still gonna be broadcasting live on on cable?
Yes.
And streaming at the same time? I know they were, they had that capability, so they'll be able to have Zoom. Um, stream on the internet and watch it on cable. Is that right?
Right, we're gonna run through the soundboard and run the, um, you know, basically the the recording and the live feed. At the same time, we'll just need to have a, um, number of. Zoom person, you know, like we always have had to, um, and then, uh, you know, a second host.
Um, how about broadband? Are we gonna be using broadband? Have we found a solution there?
Well, so we have, um, just. Basic slow, um, internet that we have in Dunsmere, but it's, it's that we've tested it's enough to support video clearly and with a number of people.
All right, well, the one thing we were looking at before is the fact that the sheriff, I believe, has, um, broadband, has fiber optic.
Yeah, we use it because of legal requirements and what they're running through that system. And so two things I'd like to add to this is, you know, A, this, I think this is gonna be the new normal. And, you know, when talking to this with Councilman Lucasey, I mean, I thought I was dating myself, but, you know, I, she's right. I think that this reaches more audiences and I compared it to, if anybody, you recognize the term mass per shut-ins. We can catch that crowd that doesn't get out. You know, and maybe it's a Midwest thing. I know Juliana understands that reference, but I know I grew up with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. 2:00 AM, you know, sermons for those that are insomniacs and can't get out of the house.
There's nothing more terrifying than falling asleep on a couch and then at 3:30 in the morning, having some preacher scream about hell and damn. Because he accidentally left the TV on. But yeah, you know, I think that's, that's ultimately what we're here for. Try and reach as many people as we can and get more participation, you know, regardless of people's viewpoints and, you know, backgrounds. I think, I think that's the key to moving forward with everything that we're doing here in Dunsmere. You know, and I'm, again, I'm so happy for the participation and interest of people who want to, you know, be on our committees and be on our commissions and the same thing for the council members here, I'm really happy to serve with. Because again, you know, Bruce and Big Dave will tell you, you know, people haven't wanted to contribute and people haven't wanted, you know, to be part of Dunsmere's future in a way because of some negativity and, you know, you know, it's, it's so energizing for myself personally. I mean, working between the two communities, Mount Chasta and Dunsmere. One of the huge differences is just the positivity and the energy that people put on down here. And I think, you know, the more that we can include people in this process, the better that we're gonna put together better ordinances, regulations, services, and work together to do that and make our, our community even better. So I really appreciate everything. This is, you know, this is a good meeting. It's a wonderful.
Yeah. It sounds like there's a, you know, complete consensus on the benefits of having both options available simultaneously. I just would like to say, do we need to direct slash, I would be in favor of the correct, no, the correct equipment to do this perfectly. Um, I think that's gonna be helpful. So if it's a matter of patching things together and they'll break versus buying the, you know, actual equipment we need, I think we should consider that seriously. If it has a certain price tag to it, I think it's justified in this case.
It's purchased and at a, you know, crazy Eddie low price for everything we need of $631. So thank you, Paris.
Oh, wow.
Wow. Congrats to you, Ms. Paris.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, we already motioned or, you know, moved to meet in person, tentatively this meeting, so I guess we'll just. Do we move to meet in person with this hybrid model next meeting?
June 3rd.
I still move.
All right, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously. I'll see you guys in person or over Zoom.
I missed my chair.
All right, that's all the old business for tonight. Now we're gonna move into new business. Very exciting. Item A, Coronavirus Round One, CV One Award and Program Guidelines. Todd?
Yep, so I'd kinda like to combine the two. B is kind of a subset of A. So we got word that we've been awarded Coronavirus One Funds. And if you remember that CV One Funds were, you know, volunteer for Dunsmere to be lead for the county. And the county's applicant, you know, application netted, you know, just under $700,000. And it's divided up by population to each jurisdiction. We have $65,000 coming to us and we have some program income to add in to this. And so the next steps are working with Siskiyou Economic Development on bringing to you a adopt guidelines on behalf of the county for how we move forward and, and deciding how these funds are spent. And so what Siskiyou Economic Development is doing right now is using some of the administrative money from this grant to procure software that will help us with grant writing and getting this money out the door and vetting a lot of these applications. And they're, you know, they being Siskiyou Economic Development is, we've been working with them on outreach strategies, including each of the county jurisdictions and chambers of commerce and other partner organizations to start forming a line of interested applicants that we are all sending up to SCAD right now until we have the rulemaking in place. And dovetailing off this is that we have also been awarded, finally, our economic development block grant money in the amount of $250,000 for the city directly. And we've moved away from the traditional EDBG, you know, small business loan program to a micro enterprise assistance program. And it's over thirty-six months that we have to spend these funds down. The, the things that we need to do as action items is again, do a dot program guidelines, which we'll bring back. And we need to establish a loan committee and the advice that we're getting from HCD and just, you know, you know, the folks that I'm talking to with experience in this type of work is that we don't include anybody from city council, because we don't want anybody with.
That's right.
And that we include somebody that understands underwriting, somebody, the city manager, finance director, and potentially somebody else that can evaluate not only how the loans are, loans or grants are collateralized, but also the likelihood of a, an investment succeeding. So we're working on putting that together and we'll bring it to council to be adopted and.
Todd, will those members be, be appointed by council?
Yeah, we'll come back. Yeah, I, I want to get them done on June 3rd so we can just start rocking and rolling. And so the other piece of this is we're still waiting on CV two and the thing that I'm running into that I find very irritating is, again, this is supposed to be coronavirus relief. We've been in coronavirus for more than a year and any larger entitlement city, and an entitlement city is over 50,000 people. They've already got their CV two and CV three funds, and this is an ongoing issue. And I've been talking to Tony Douse, and we're talking about how we can get together a state legislative session to say, hey, when are we gonna start moving away from serving the bigger cities first? Cause I understand why they're doing what they're doing. It's easier to process applications that serve more people for larger cities. But the people that really need it are the people that are in rural and small communities that when they've got businesses that are failing and they need money now.
Todd?
Yes.
Um, I would, during our last meeting of the League of California City Sacramento Division, this is a subject I brought up, because we had talked about that. And it's my understanding from what they said was that this was the way the, the act was set up so that the federal government is sending all the money directly to the, those entitlement cities. And then the rest of us are being handled through the state. So it seems like with that in play, it's the state that's causing the delay.
Yep.
Yes, you're absolutely right. It's, it's HCD. And they've been in disarray for years. They are, they're very helpful and they've gotten better. They're better than when I dealt with them last year, but Quinton Gaddy and Corey Hayden and Blake and I, we have a conversation set up next week with some members from HCD to get the specifics on what we need to move forward and also to, you know, for lack of a better word, complain.
Yeah.
Todd?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Quentin Gabby. He's on this line. His name popped up. He's listening. He's here.
Oh, I know.
Who is he?
He's, he is our guru. He is a.
You said guru?
Guru and man, this guy knows the ins and outs of these programs more than anybody. And man, you talk about a guy who hustles. This is your guy.
Okay, thank you.
I know, Quentin, you wanna take a bow or you wanna add anything?
Thank you, Quentin.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to give everyone an overview and just sort of, this is the, this is the timeline, just to encapsulate everything. We submitted these applications in September of 2020, right after the, the peak of the second lockdown in the summertime when businesses had to close again and they were really hurting. So we were really hustling and optimistic about getting this up and going. We received the contract the last week of April. So, you know, you add the months together of how long that took and that was the state processing it. So, so it's been difficult on our part for me to constantly remind everybody that the cavalry is on its way. But, uh, 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 thank God that we have the contract signed, our program is active and we have it in hand. And so I'm gonna give you a, an update on CV one first. Where we're at, what we need to do, what, what action items y'all have to take. And when we're expecting to be able to get businesses applying on that. So, um, you'll see attached at the end of your agenda packet are the program guidelines for this. The CV one guidelines are significantly pared back to, to, to where we're just giving out grants. We're not even gonna play around with forgivable loans and forgiveness periods. For, for micro enterprises who are income qualified or have employees who are income qualified, we're gonna be able to plug some holes. So if they fell through the cracks of PPP or the EIDL, or if they had to take out loans to stay afloat, we're gonna be able to come in and remedy that. We're currently working on, on a soft rollout and Corey and myself, my colleague, we've developed a, a basic web application right now. It is HIPAA compliant, so that means, cause, cause folks are gonna have to upload their tax returns and it's gonna have sensitive information. So we want to make sure that's protected and encrypted. But as Todd mentioned, I am looking at getting a software program to develop at the same time that sort of centralizes and keeps all the information there. It'll make monitoring very easy. There won't have to be any manual data entry. All the applications will be rolled into the same monitoring system. And so I'm comparing a few different bids on that. And I'm gonna prepare a price analysis for you guys to look at and, and actually you guys will be the, the governing body who makes the decision on, on which we may be able to go with. So, so stay tuned for that. But for today, we do want to enact these program guidelines located at the back of the agenda packet, and I can answer any questions about those.
Thank you.
Where'd we find this guy?
I, I went to, I went to Irica High School, so I, I, you know, I'm a Siskiyou County native.
Good. And I wanna thank you for, oh my God, bro, thank you for your enthusiasm, dedication, commitment to the city of Dunsmere. I'm, for one, I'm, I'm telling you, thank you. I appreciate it. This is what we need. You, you seem like, Dan, you're on fire, bro, and we appreciate you.
I do have to say, when I was a kid, Dunsmere Little League did kick my team's butt. I played for Big Springs.
We're sorry about that ship, but you gotta get over it.
But someday.
I love it.
Um, and then I'd like to give you guys an update for the, for the city of Dunsmere's own micro enterprise program. And this is, this is, this is what I would like to, to think of you guys as just another incentive, another good reason to do business in the city of Dunsmere. One thing that peeves me, and I'll just bend to a little about HCD, is that in the initial NOFA that we've, I had applied to, they allowed for $500,000 for that program. In the second, not the First Amendment, but the Second Amendment, they, they actually reduced that amount to 250,000. And it's buried like twenty pages in the document. So the city of Dunsmere's program got reduced to $250,000. If you look at the 2021 NOFA this year, and, and they said they reduced that to limit programmatic risk. If you look at the 2021 NOFA, they raised that cap to $750,000. So, so that, that piqued me, but the good news is that when the city of Dunsmere hits 50% expenditure on that program, well, you know, draws it down to 125, they can apply again. So, so the way we're looking at it is, is making it relatable, consistent, longstanding, a, a, a good incentive to do business in the city of Dunsmere. So for that one, we are gonna have a loan committee as city manager Yu Ha mentioned, it would be an odd member of individuals who, uh, who are members or active in, in the city of Dunsmere's community. Last but not least, I want to talk about the CV two and three programs that are, that are coming up, because I think these are important too, and it's gonna help out a lot of folks. You guys mentioned previously, you know, there's a lot of households that are behind on water. And they're not just behind on water, they're behind on mortgages, on broadband, on power. So, so when HCD does process and we get contracts, Great Northern will be doing a subsistence assistance program that will allow on the first, the first payment that applicants apply to, they'll be able to go back 12 months of their bills to add on to that. So these first payments are gonna clear a lot of people out of a lot of debt who have been suffering. So, so that will also, you know, add some padding to the general fund that's been hurt by, you know, water delinquencies. And so that, that's on its way. And then we're adding additional funds to the, to the micro program. It's gonna beef it up to, to 1.6 million in total. And that's just gonna work off the existing economies of scale of the first round. So we'll be able to just provide more, more grants directly to businesses throughout Siskiyou County.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Every time we've looked at water rates, there's been the question about why doesn't the city provide some sort of support for low-income families with the water bill, a, a lower rate? And of course, by law, Prop 218 and everything, it's against the law for us to have different rates. But you kind of tickled my mind there with mentioning Great Northern. Is there some way that there could be energy brought to bear with whatever agencies are out there that could help us put together such a program? Because I know the city can't do it, but if there's some outside program doing it, that could be a source for support.
I can answer that. We can't do it as a city, but the state right now has relief, you know, above and beyond what we're pulling in for CV two and CV three. The state has a program to help in relief and back utility bills. Because if you have a city-owned utility as opposed to a private utility, the cities can start now asking to, to recoup the money, you know, whether it's a payment plan or not, to start recouping the money that has accrued over time where certain folks haven't paid. But the, the state will help you and CV two and CV three, when it's in place, is additional help.
So how would the, how would a normal person, a citizen out there know about that? And what would they, how would, how would that get involved?
Do a Google search for California.
That, 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 excuse me, Todd, that's where I gotta get involved. He said normal. That's me. Do a Google. We need to inform the people that it's out there if they seek the information.
Correct. But if you do a search on utility, California utility relief for low and moderate income, it will come up.
Okay.
And how.
Could we maybe put that on a water bill, informing people that they could go here and search that to find that information?
Uh, every mailing is really expensive. Let me look at it.
But informing the people is more important than, I mean, we're talking about a year's worth of bills that could be helped out with. The people need to know that they can seek the information to get the help, just tell them about it.
Put it on the water bill.
That's what I'm saying, but he said no.
Well, I'm not saying no, I just need to find out how much it is, because we've, we've been involved with a couple of bailers as of late. And, you know, it gets expensive, but, um, yeah, I'll look into it.
Hey, who found this Quentin dude? Thank you. This guy's great.
We found each other. And it's, it was a bro hug from the beginning.
Hey, Quentin, thank you. I oughta buy you a cup of coffee one of these days.
Ah, shucks, that'd be, that'd be great. I love heading down to Dunsmere. Uh, Shucks, that'd be, uh, uh, that'd be great. I love heading down to Dunsborough. I I was, I was going to say, uh, a couple, well, one, I know one Dunsborough, uh, business that's got in the restaurant, uh, revitalization fund. Um, but if you know any, uh, that are out there, that fund is open right now and they can apply to it and it and it's, it's, it's helping folks out. And, uh, and we're available at the Siskiyou Economic Development, uh, we have the Small Business Development Center and we're there helping folks, uh, complete their applications. So, you know, spread the word of these things. Uh, it 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 takes a village to get people, uh, uh, informed about it.
Oh, we are the village, bro. We'll spread the word. Thank you, Quentin, for your time. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, but. This guy's great.
Thank you so much, uh, Quentin. We really appreciate your work.
Yeah, we do.
All right, um. Uh, we need a resolution on this item. Is that correct?
Quentin?
I know, I believe, uh, uh, sorry, Blake and I were were the ones talking about this and Blake is out because of his second shot. Um.
Information?
It's just supposed to be an action item. And then, uh, uh, basically you'll see on the cover of the, um. Of the program guidelines, it has a date for when it's adopted. So so just an action item that's recorded in the minutes, uh, that's voted upon is sufficient. It doesn't need a full out resolution.
On the, on page twenty seven, there's a suggested motion, which is a motion to adopt the attached micro enterprise financial assistance program guidelines with community development block grant funds, CDBG slap dash CV.
I second that motion. Now that you've done it.
Motion and a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
No, I, we've got public comment. All right, if anyone would like to make a public comment, uh, raise your hand or hit star nine and make a public comment on this item.
I don't see anyone.
All right, if there's no one, then we'll close public comment on this item and we'll proceed, uh, with the motion at hand. Is there any discussion of the motion?
I like the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we cordially invite Quentin to come to the next city council meeting if he would like to come in person? Introduce himself. I'd like to shake his hand.
Um, I I would have to punt it to a couple of weeks away because, uh, my, I I had just recently helped my sister move to Atlanta and I'm actually visiting her to, on Saturday. Now we're all vaccinated.
Well, one of these days you come to city council meeting. I'd like to meet you, bro. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, um, being here. And then we combined item A and B together, um, essentially.
I believe the loan committee will be coming back at a future item.
Yeah, that was much information today. We didn't form it today.
I'm reaching out, uh, Mark Rowley's extended. I'm reaching out to, um, a couple other people that are really solid.
And others who would be interested can contact City Hall too.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think that brings us to item twelve, consideration of future addendum items, agenda items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
After watching this meeting tonight. I think that it is only right in. Consideration, respect, and as far as participation. That anytime on an agenda that we have people waiting. Whether it's for an appointment for a committee, whether it's to be recognized. I think that we should put that item of business first. And then we could deal with business just out of consideration. As far as tonight, we did the discussion of fireworks before we did the interview of planning commissioners. They all sat on the saddle on the sidelines waiting. Um. In in my opinion, I've been doing this for like nine, ten years. I think that the people, they they come and they step up. Out of respect, we should let them take care of the business and then let them go on their merry way. That's just my opinion, but I hope council agrees with.
Councilmember Kaisler, um, what what we could do is I I would second that and I would be supportive. I think for the next meeting, what I can do is just draft, uh, something to amend our protocols if that's okay. And then that's.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's, that that would be super easy.
I mean, it's just respect.
Well, uh, there's, there's kind of a couple of things. This one would be, of course, you know, in the pre-agenda meetings, we always discuss the order of the items and what they should be. And there, there's always different things there like. Um, people who are interested in coming to the meeting for fireworks is a whole different group of people than who'd be waiting for the planning commission item. And in general, you know, anyone who's going for this thing in particular, you know, you should be able to be able to make it through a half hour of a meeting if you're going to be serving. On a committee with several meetings, but I do think I I would like, um, the agenda to, or the protocols to allow for that, um, something that's not quite a special presentation, but something of that nature.
Councilmember Art has his hand up.
Yes?
Well, I just, uh, want to make sure that we stay faithful to our commitment to have the business listening session. Um, I know that our effort to do the visioning, which is supposed to lead the planning effort, is sort of in never, never land right now. Uh, and I understand all the reasons, but as we try to. Lay the foundation for economic development in our community, we're all aware there's a number of new businesses coming to town. Uh, the notion that the city could financially support micro businesses. Um, how we can work together to support. In the absence of a chamber. So I'm hoping that session is being actively planned and is not too far away. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Art.
Mr. Mayor, also.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to bring back at the, maybe not the next, but a future, we really need to discuss. A free dump day. This is something that I have seen help this city. It makes it work. Maybe we could invite Diana, have a discussion.
The perfect committee for that, Dave. You and Peter, uh, Peter are supposed to be meeting about that, so you'll be able to tell her directly.
All right. Look, because it's something.
Juliana, um, and Peter, but.
Oh, that's right. I keep getting that confused too.
Yeah, see, that's why I put it on the committee because I mean on the agenda because I'm.
Well, I I think that, you know, it needs to be the committee, et cetera. Uh, I think that.
This town needs it.
Yeah. Well, I guess it just comes down to the price tag. So perhaps, Todd, you could look into what that price tag is and, uh, finance committee could, uh. Maybe weigh in on whether it's possible to afford it. Are there any other items for future agenda?
I would like to request a new business item that I can put together from the email that I got from the American Passenger Rail Association. Um, yeah, just to get some feedback that I can send them, um, from us as a a a full council of just, you know, how we feel the passenger rail is doing. And I can come up with a couple of questions. Um, I can send, uh, maybe a press release to, um, Wendy and Todd to put in the paper possibly. Or actually, I could just work with Shereen to, to put, um, a a notice in the paper to let people know that we're taking input on the passenger rail. And hopefully they could come to a future meeting. So I know we've got a lot of things coming up and, um, I can look at that email and see what the deadline is for comments. And so, um, I can work with Wendy and Todd to put that on a future agenda and write the press release and communicate that to them. If if you're okay with that, if there's a.
Yeah, I'm very happy with that.
And if I can add just one thing, again, it's a little self-serving, but, um, if we can take it easy on piling on right now, I am barely keeping my head above water. With just the sheer number of things that are happening right now that are all good. Um, but, uh, who, uh, you know. I gotta, I gotta get some stuff off my plate.
But you're special ops. You could handle that shit.
Put it this way, I'm I'm very special forces. Uh, I, you know, I, um, yeah, I'm I'm limited in my abilities.
Right on, bro.
All right, definitely. Okay, um, well, with that, I think, um, we're probably going to have enough items that come up between now and then, um. For the meeting and who's on the pre-agenda meeting?
Oh, um, God, I don't have it up in front of me.
I think it's Councilman Deutsch, if my memory serves correctly.
So it is, it is.
Okay, I'll be there.
All right.
I ha- I think I have to review the, uh, uh, pre-agenda order because I think we're getting close to the end of that. So I'll, I'll send everybody an email with the updated list and the dates.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send you the old Google doc, the one you sent me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, just, I want to say something. It is an honor to work with this council. I've worked with some councils that. You cannot never get nothing done. And Peter, you you can relate to this. It is kind of nice to have a cohesive council. And I, and I, I'm, I'm just proud of all of you guys. Thank you.
All I'm just, I would like to say, I hope you guys are feeling the momentum you guys are creating.
I do. I can feel it.
Good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Having said that, motion to adjourn.
Good idea.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
On the third.
All right.
Gavel. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, Wendy.
Night, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.